Good evening and welcome to the Port St. Lucie City Council District Three Candidate Forum, hosted by the League of Women Voters of St. Lucie County. I'm Sabrina Taylor, the local president of the local chapter. Just a few quick reminders and important information before we get started. So vote by mail ballots are scheduled to be mailed out on August 13th. You can return your mail-in ballot either by mail or in person at the Supervisor of Elections office. If you choose to mail it, that is your mail-in ballot, please allow 10 to 14 days for delivery. Your ballot must be received no later than 7:00 PM on August 27th. Early voting is on September 11th, and there are three locations: the Paula A. Lewis Library, the Port St. Lucie Community Center, and the Port St. Lucie Civic Center. Lastly, Election Day is September 21st. To learn more about the League of Women Voters and how you can get involved if you're interested, please visit our website at www.lwvslc.org. Now on to the forum, which is the reason why you have made time to join us tonight. So tonight you will hear from candidates who are vying for the City Council District Three leadership position. So the format will be as follows. Each candidate will have a 90-second introduction, followed by a series of questions that will be facilitated by our moderator, who you will meet shortly. Each candidate will have two minutes to answer each question, and at the end of that series, also each candidate will have a two-minute closing. Please know this is not a debate, and so candidates not only will answer those questions, but they also will be able to have an opening and a closing as I just shared with you. As candidates are moving through this process, they will receive two notifications. One will be at the 30-second mark to let them know they have 30 seconds remaining, and then the last will be a stop sign, if you will, to let them know that their time is up. I would like to introduce you to our lovely moderator for this evening. She is none other than Ms. Carol Wyatt. So Carol is the co-owner and operator of three local radio stations: WPSL in Port St. Lucie, WSTU in Stuart, and WJNX in Fort Pierce. Carol also is the president of WPSL's Christmas for Kids of St. Lucie County. She's the past president of the Rotary Club of Port St. Lucie and is a member of the Port St. Lucie Businesswomen. Carol has many years in broadcasting, including as a reporter in Los Angeles prior to moving to Florida in 1993. We are so honored to have her as our candidate for a moderator yet for another year. And now I turn it over to Carol, but before I do, I'll come back to you at the end of the forum and share with you some additional information. Take it away, Carol.
Thank you, Sabrina, and welcome to the League of Women Voters of St. Lucie County Candidate Forum. We want to thank the members of the league for developing all the questions for tonight. We thank the candidates for participating, and particularly, we thank all the people watching and listening for informing yourselves about the special election in Port St. Lucie in what continues to be a pretty challenging time. This evening, we have the candidates for Port St. Lucie City Council District Three, which is the southwest quadrant of the city. It's basically south of Gatlin and west of the Turnpike. It is a citywide special election to fill the remainder for the term of Shannon Martin, who is now a candidate for mayor. It is a nonpartisan race, and there are six candidates on the ballot. With us this evening, we have Anthony Bonna, Jared Michael Greenberg, Travis Walker, and Tavarris Williams. Also on the ballot, Fritz Musson Alexandra and Gregory Blake. Now, we have kind of determined ahead of time with a drawing of names who will start first. We will start with Anthony Bonna, and we'll rotate after that. We'll begin with opening statements, a minute 30 seconds. Mr. Bonna?
Hi, I'm Anthony Bonna, your candidate for Port St. Lucie City Council District Three. And I want to thank the League of Women Voters and Carol and Sabrina for hosting this, and Andy as well. It's very important that we make informed decisions in our elections. I grew up in this community and absolutely loved Port St. Lucie. I was raised by a single mom, working two jobs, and I learned a lot of my values from groups like the Boy Scouts and Big Brothers, Big Sisters, I'm a proud Eagle Scout, and also my church. And those values, hard work, patriotism, service, stayed with me. I earned a finance degree from Georgetown University with scholarships from a lot of local groups and organizations here, and I always knew I wanted to come back and serve this community. So today, I'm a Rotarian, I'm on the board of Big Brothers, Big Sisters, I'm the treasurer of the St. Lucie County Education Foundation, I'm the financial secretary for the Knights of Columbus, and it's in that spirit of giving back that I want to go on the, that I want to go on the Port St. Lucie City Council and make a difference for our community. And so I ask that you consider me in this election and would be honored to earn your vote.
Thank you, and next candidate, Tavarris Williams.
Well, thank you, Carol, Sabrina, and the League of Women Voters for hosting this event, and thank you for all the listeners that are tuning in. Good evening, my name is Tavarris Williams, and I'm running for Port St. Lucie City Council District Three. I owe everything that I've become to the lessons and work ethic imparted on me by my civil servant parents, an elementary teacher and a police officer. I honor my parents by doing what I was raised to do, and that has served my community. I hold a master's degree in public administration, which has served me in my professional career in child welfare and foster care. I've learned firsthand the burdens and trauma that afflict our community and how it truly takes a village to uplift one another from generational cycles. Currently, as a contract manager, my responsibilities include fiscal management of the Treasure Coast $30 million contract with the Department of Children and Families, while ensuring that our families have access to services that allow them to become the best version of themselves for their families. This takes tremendous budgetary analysis, meticulous attention to detail, and purposeful relationship cultivation and collaboration across city, county, and state levels of government. My experiences are why I'm running for office, and my experience makes me the best choice to be your next city councilman. I want to give a voice to our community's challenges so that the residents of Port St. Lucie can have their burdens listened to, advocated for, and ultimately lessened by concerned leadership. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next candidate, Jared Michael Greenberg.
Hello, and welcome all to the Women League of Voters Forum tonight. I'm Jared Michael Greenberg, I'm honored to be able to run for the District Three seat. I'm a mechanical engineer, worked several different fields, as you can tell by my website, and I want to represent you to keep your freedoms where they should be, with your power. And I am running on making projects that the city can do to increase economic opportunity for the community by creating good-paying jobs that are there to stay and keeping it local and solving our own problems in our own backyard. And I am an Eagle Scout, got my Eagle Scout when I was 15 years old, when I lived overseas. We got quite a few Eagle Scouts on the forum tonight, which is very impressive. And I'm just honored to serve you guys, and please go to my website and check out more information. And I'm just here to serve. Thank you so much.
Thank you, and next candidate, Travis Walker.
Thank you, League of Women Voters, thank you, Carol, thank you, Andy, thank you, Sabrina, for everything that you're doing for us and the community as a whole. I am Travis Walker, running for City Council here, Port St. Lucie, District Three. As a citizen of Port St. Lucie, you are your family's hero. Every day you get up and work hard to support and protect yourself and your loved ones and provide the best life. Your intent is to make you and your loved ones' life better is the American dream. The idea of falling short of that better life due to job instability, crime, and overall quality of life are genuine, real, and valid concerns. As a husband, father, son, professional business owner, and a citizen of Port St. Lucie, I too face this, and I get it. I can relate to working late into the night in order to make a better life for my family. I also understand being concerned about my family's safety and well-being as this amazing city of ours continues to grow. I envision a business climate that brings the next level of jobs for this generation and future ones. Port St. Lucie has changed dramatically over the past 20, 10, and even five years. We need to continue the forward momentum to meet the needs of our residents with a great quality of life for everyone. I want to represent you to ensure that these goals are met. I've always had a calling for public service, especially in my community, and I'm fairly knowledgeable about Port St. Lucie's history, and I believe that I have the experience necessary to help lead our city. I am Travis Walker, and I respectfully ask for your vote on September 21st, 2021. If you want more information about how we can better our city together, please visit votetraviswalker.com or email me at traviswalker@votetraviswalker.com, and look forward to helping the city out.
Okay, thank you. Now we go to the questions, you'll have two minutes each, and let's start with Anthony Bonna. Sections of Port St. Lucie are older, and some were not well-planned in the initial development. Other sections are a lot newer and are experiencing population growth. How will you balance and address the diverse infrastructure needs of the city?
Well, absolutely, and Carol, you brought up a very good point when you were introducing this. This is a citywide election, and so although we're in the southwest quadrant, we represent every single citizen of Port St. Lucie, and we must leave no area behind. And I can tell you, when I'm knocking on doors on the east side of town, some of those residents feel ignored. And so what I'm going to do is I'm going to put a focus on every single area of this city. I'm going to listen every corner of Port St. Lucie, what do our residents want? Is what we're doing in line with our strategic plan? How are we working together with other governments and leveraging dollars and grants that can be available to us? And so through citizen-driven processes, through working with the business community, the chamber, the EDC, we can truly revitalize, you know, city center and the eastern side, the Villatrie corridor. We can provide economic opportunity to all of our citizens by working together as a community. And, you know, it's a process, so I'm not going to tell you we're going to bring this or we're going to bring that specific thing, but it's a process, and it's a community-driven process, and we all need to work together. And remember that we are one Port St. Lucie, and that's the fundamental approach that I will take to this office.
Okay, same question for Tavarris Williams, how would you address diverse infrastructure needs?
Well, as you mentioned, Carol, we are on the precipice of becoming a major city as our population exceeds 200,000 residents. We are one community, and our expansion and growth is occurring right now. And as such, our planning needs to focus on how citizens will get to where they're going, and we have to remain cognizant of our environmental impact during our growth. Our intermodal plans within our strategic plan will be crucial in ensuring our roads don't become congested. And for those that already are planning to expand and widen roads at key junctures, as evidenced by our roadway committee studies, need to occur, not just for the needs of today, but 20 years into the future. The way we ensure our infrastructure can adequately support our growing needs is to ensure PSL is receiving our fair share of all impact and mobility fees that we've collected for St. Lucie County. And we here in Port St. Lucie comprise 70% of these funds totaling well in excess of $30 million over the past five years, and our roads, drainage, parks, schools, and libraries have not received their fair share of this funding due to these fees not being secured and properly managed. Thank you.
Okay, same question, Jared Michael Greenberg, how to address the diverse infrastructure needs of the city?
Yes, so, well, when you build, you have expansions, you have infrastructure needs, and those are all part of the assessments, it's how cities work. And so if the city hasn't gotten their fair share, well, the city needs to get their fair from the county. But far as the east side, I'd like to talk with the residents to see what they want. Do they want neighborhood parks? Do they want more trees? Do they want more flowers? What are they looking for? Do they want more boat ramp access? Do they want more tennis courts, recreation fields? Or do they want better shopping or a city life, you know? What are the residents that are in the areas that are feeling left behind? What are they needing in their community? Because not everybody in a certain area wants some things. So I would reach out to them, my neighbor to reach out to me and ask, "Hey, Jared, what can we do to improve my neighborhood?" So we got trees planted, we got a bunch of trees planted, we got trash cans put in, we got recycling cans put in. And I'm part of the Keep the City Port St. Lucie Beautiful by adopting the street and picking up the trash. And that has broadened awareness of we have a trash problem in the city. So far as the infrastructure and growth, growth is good as long as it's planned and developed. I am very a big proponent of rotaries, I like roundabouts. I wish Becker Road had more of them, and that's one of the reasons why I moved here, because they had engineering principles on growth plans so that future growth would not be a hindrance. So I'm all for using science to make life better. Thank you, and vote for Jared Greenberg.
Travis Walker, for the diverse infrastructure needs of the city.
Thank you, Carol, and we do have very diverse infrastructure needs of the city, and I think that the past city councils were wise to implement a strong utility program, which obviously we want to expand upon and move into, moving people off of septic. Infrastructure being said, many years ago, I actually worked for $5 an hour shoveling popcorn at the Village Green Movie Theater, which is now city center. And so I've seen our city grow and develop in different ways and certainly understand the infrastructure needs that are there. When I was ran for, when I ran for City Council for this seat over 20 years ago, we were dealing with F-levels of service on Thrust and Oroso and, you know, working to find ways to develop that. So the infrastructure and the traffic has been an issue ongoing for this city from the get-go. Obviously, being a GDC-planned community, you know, we've had our challenges, but that doesn't mean that we can't overcome them, and I'm always wanting to find a way or make a way. And so when it comes to infrastructure and traffic needs, constantly trying to find ways to make sure we're doing it, because the truth of the matter is, while we're the seventh largest in the state of Florida in size of population, we're the third largest in size of landmass. So we have tons of development or, you know, opportunities for development and opportunities for conservation that occur within that. So constantly moving through that is going to be a big part of it. I think that, you know, working with the county, auditing the impact fees, the mobility fees that have been presented to the county is a big issue in front of us. I applaud the current City Council for their work with the TPO, the transportation organization, in order to make sure that we have concurrency, make sure that we're working well within our roads and infrastructures and developing, and having forethought when it comes to our transportation needs. Thank you, Carol.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to the second question, starting with Tavarris Williams. With the tremendous growth in Port St. Lucie, what actions would you propose to ensure environmentally responsible development and to incentivize green businesses?
Well, Carol, the responsibility is on each and everyone of us to be conscious of how our decisions impact our community. As city councilman, I will continue to support the city's strategic plan of increasing number of parks and green spaces that we have available to us throughout our city, continuing our green landscaping initiatives, and ensuring developers are contributing to the upkeep of our infrastructure networks as we allow them into our city. It's clear for me, as a weekend fisherman and participant in parks and waterway cleaning events, that our local waterways, rivers, lagoons, estuaries, they're a large part of our city's charm, as well as a driving force regarding our tourism economy. It will be through the actions of today that we secure our tomorrow. We need to continue a responsible, yet targeted, approach to converting our remaining septic tank homes into our sewer grid. We need to continue our fertilizer ordinances, both at the city and county level, in an effort to avoid contaminants entering our watershed. And we need to expand upon our water quality and drainage projects so that our waterways remain as pristine as we found them. Our relationships with our state legislation, they will aid our efforts tremendously as we continue to push back on the Army Corps of Engineers and their plans to discharge polluted Lake Okeechobee waters into our backyard. Thank you.
Okay, next, Jared Michael Greenberg, same question, ensuring environmentally responsible development.
Well, I am pro solar power. I have solar on my roof because I think it is really neat and I'd be able to cut down on my energy costs. But to incentivize builders to make a greener space, you can do it through legislation, but I'd rather have the capital system let the homeowners choose, "Hey, if you want to live in an area that promotes more green space, this is the area we're setting aside." Because a lot of lots in Port St. Lucie are really tiny because of GDC configuration, trying to get as much bang for their buck. So I am all proponent for getting more trees and more parks. You go to my website, you can check out all the pond parks ideas that I have to promote what we currently have in our backyard. We have a ton of retention areas that we can utilize by making those community-based on what the community wants. Some want kayak ramps to be able to go camping in their retention ponds. Some want walking trails around them, some would like a gazebo on them. So we should utilize as much as we can currently in our backyard. That doesn't cost anything, but I am very pro more parks, more forests, more trees. I love nature, and it's great to sit back and relax.
Okay, for Travis Walker, same question, environmentally responsible development and incentivizing green business?
Sure, absolutely, and as an Eagle Scout, you know, I've always believed that conservation is a huge issue and making sure that we're protecting our environment is integral. I applaud the efforts of Mayor Warback in the previous council. We have Tree City USA, which has helped preserve more trees, and there's, you know, goals and requirements and thresholds that are required to do that, and the city has done a good job of being a tree-friendly city and Tree City USA. I think there's an important part about lobbying the state and federal officials that we work with, making sure we had and develop good relationships there in order to make sure that we're getting our fair share of grants and incentives in order to make sure that we're properly taking care of our environment, working with the Army Corps of Engineers and Southwater Water Management District, just to name a few. I applaud the efforts of the city councils with the McCarty Ranch Water Farming Project. That's a great project where we're taking water out of the canal, we're cleaning that water, we're putting it back in the canal, and I'd applaud those efforts, and we'd love to see more of those type of projects here in the future. I think the city's done a great job with that. Mitigation banking, which is the effort of taking development entitlements and developers who come into the community who want to develop, you know, paying into mitigation banks in order to develop the properties they want to, and then the city can use those mitigation bank credits in order to facilitate and strengthen the environment. I think that's all important, and I think that really it starts to, everything comes down to development agreements and development orders. Before the entitlements, the zonings, the site plans are actually entitled, the city needs to make sure that, you know, the environment is being protected pursuant to the development that they're allowing to occur. And so I definitely would be reviewing, as an attorney, I'd be reviewing developer agreements and other development orders to make sure that the city is protecting the environment while at the same time continuing the smart growth strategy.
Okay, same question to Anthony Bonna, environmentally responsible development?
Absolutely. Well, this is, this is a very important issue, and, you know, we live in paradise, and it's up to us to protect it and to get involved. As a county commissioner, in 2018, our water quality and protecting our environment was a very important issue to me. And so, you know, I was, I was very big on working with our federal and state officials. I have great relationships with them, and I know that they're very concerned about, about protecting our local treasures here, here in our community. I believe that, you know, parks are very important, we need diverse parks, we need, and we need to, as Jared said, to find out what, what different neighborhoods want. And we need to do things like promote, promote the work of the Keep Port St. Lucie Beautiful Committee. We need to, engaging citizens on this issue is very important because if we take responsibility as a community, that's the only way that we're going to protect our environment. Working together in terms of the development community, providing incentives to them, letting them know what our citizens want, you know, enforcing, enforcing our regulations is going to be, is going to be a very important approach as well. But we need to take a very balanced approach, we need to grow smartly and not just let things, not just let things go out of, out of control. And so I think everyone in the community wants to be responsible, and I'm going to work to make sure that happens.
Okay, next question, we'll start with Jared Michael Greenberg. Port St. Lucie has experienced many crises over the years, from natural disasters to failed business ventures. Management of a crisis requires cooperation, long-term recovery planning, and input from many sources. So what kind of resources would you use for input and cooperation to address a crisis situation for which a solution is not readily available? Mr. Greenberg?
Being a cool customer, so there's always solutions to problems. Even though you don't think there's a solution to a problem, there will always be a solution to a problem. And the ideal situation is to not get into the situation even to begin with. Make sure you vet the customer to begin with, make sure you do their credit checks, make sure you do background investigations to know what type of customer you are inviting into the city to do business with. So, I mean, I applaud the city government for reaching out, trying to get more business because that, you have to grow the community, and industry grows communities. But I think we should have done a little bit better job vetting the clients. Because as soon as the FBI locked the doors in digital domain, the city should have been aware of that way before they gave the permission for them to even build digital domain. But that's in the past, the city has done a great job with recovering from that and, and learning from that. So I just keep, keep honest and upfront with the citizens and with the customers that we're inviting to bring them in, to make our city the best city that it can be. And hopefully, we'll be number six coming this upcoming census, which will attract more businesses to come into our area, which would give more high-paying jobs and keep our community thriving. Thank you. Remember, vote for Jared Greenberg, what can Jared do for you?
Next, Travis Walker, same question. What kind of resources would you bring to address a crisis situation?
Sure. No, it's an important question, Carol, and, you know, honestly, my mindset has always been, you know, obviously, we're going to use the resources we have, but it's also being resourceful. So it's not really your lack of resources, it's your lack of resourcefulness sometimes that causes issues when it comes to making decisions. First off, would be maximizing my relationships with state and federal level, making sure that we have good relationships also on the county level. Right now, we're dealing with a situation with the county which is getting a little tenuous at times, and I think it's important for us to see the bigger picture and know that there's, there's a bigger issues that go on, and especially when an emergency comes along, we want to make sure we have good relationships with our county, state, and federal level officials in order to make sure that we maximize opportunities and resources. And when a call needs to be made, and so we can make that call and have that positive relationship. Being, being aware and being smart about tax dollars upfront, being fiscally responsible is a huge issue, I think, upfront. If you want to be, be prepared, like the three Eagle Scouts that are on this panel today, you know, be prepared, be cognizant, be aware, and be mindful of the tax dollars as you use them so that you can prepare for a rainy day. You know, when it comes to some of the incentives and economic development that's happened, you know, in the past, those who are, those who do not learn from, from history are doomed to repeat it, right? So, you know, certainly, we need to make sure that we are learning from maybe past mistakes of other city councils, other cities, making sure that we don't repeat some of those mistakes. And for, whether for better or for worse, as an attorney, I'm kind of trained to go and look what could go wrong. When I'm reviewing agreements, when I'm reviewing contracts, you know, my mindset is always, you know, how could this agreement go sideways? How could this relationship go sideways? And so, you know, when I'm approached with an item on the agenda with regards to how things could work, my mindset is always going to be like, okay, if this were the worst-case scenario, how would this play out? Thank you, Carol.
Okay, next, Anthony Bonna, the resources to address a crisis situation?
Made the microphone mistake. I agree with my competitors that relationships are very important and also that perspective's important. I served as a county commissioner so I can understand the county perspective, and I also have great relationships with our federal, state, and local officials, and most of which, many of which have endorsed my campaign for city council. And so I think that being able to work together and bring all parties at all levels to the table is, is something. is, is something that is, that is very important. And I would leverage those relationships, you know, it takes time to build relationships in a community. And that's something that I've been working to do year after year after year. And I'll use my experience as a commissioner and I'll draw on that experience. No matter what the crisis or what the issue is, I think having, having a level head and a balanced approach is important in all circumstances. Nobody should get everything they want in, in, in a deal. Everyone has to give a little bit and put community first. And, and so, you know, one example, when, when I, when I became a commissioner, I found out we had the highest tax rate in the state. I wanted to lower it right away, but there was the issue that we had funding school deputies, we had the infrastructure referendum and we had Amendment One on the ballot. And so we couldn't do it right away. And so I worked with the team to ensure that we didn't have to raise taxes. When we do economic incentives, we need to make sure that taxpayers are protected and not do upfront investment of money that, that left us with so much debt in the past. Thank you.
Okay, and next, Taveras Williams, what resources would you use to address a crisis situation?
Well, I've learned that true leadership is seen when egos are put aside and expertise and other points of view are considered so that you can arrive at the best possible outcome. While personally minoring in emergency management, the first thing I was taught was the importance of operational command. Operational command is essentially a single voice directing action, but what makes OC so dynamic is that it takes input from subject matter experts to marshal resources to mitigate current dangers to the residents around you and ultimately devising strategies to further contain slash remove said emergency. Collaboration with our city leaders as well as state leadership will be key in any emergency management response. And we need to ensure that we remain planful, that we have diverse meetings filled with numerous viewpoints so that we have no blind spots in that planning process. I believe those resources will be available to us as we continue to learn from mistakes of the past, as we continue to integrate ourselves with various funding streams that are available to ensure our city is well positioned to handle emergencies. And again, making sure that we're great stewards of the aid that we receive. The relationships that our city leaders have currently that we've cultivated has been tremendous. And just this past city council meeting, we saw tremendous collaboration at an emergency situation where it took the pooling of multiple city departments, emergency responders to come up to a positive outcome from one of our very own who is at danger of losing his life. And that is what it takes in order to be a leader, understanding that it takes outside perspective and other subject matter experts to ensure that the proper outcome is achieved. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to our fourth question and we'll start with Travis Walker. In your opinion, how important is a Florida home rule in city government and a city council's ability to execute ordinances, codes and other official actions when state and county laws and codes do not adequately address a city's specific needs? Mr. Walker?
That's a very important question, Carol, as because what we're seeing more and more from Tallahassee is an attempt to erode our ability to legislate and enforce our own laws here locally. The, the city has, you know, its own, you know, residents, you know, for some legislator, you know, or Speaker of the House or Senate President to be on the other side of the coast or the, in the panhandle, to be helping to lead a local home rule initiatives against city of Port St. Lucie interests is a huge issue. Two important instances come to mind. Right now, you know, I mean, the legislature recently enacted something where, you know, the city can't refuse or restrict Airbnb homes. And so now the city is dealing with issues and possibilities where people are having party houses and impacting roads and impacting noise and that type of thing. And the city can't impose any type of restrictions on those Airbnb or vacation rentals. And so, you know, that's one instance where home rule has really, you know, impacted the ability for the city to legislate it. Look, I mean, the city, the city council, I, when I go to the grocery store and someone stops me and says, hey, Travis, I have an issue with this, I'll be there to listen, you know, you don't have that same access to the legislators that are in Tallahassee. So the ability to govern effectively directly is impacted when home rule is, is changed. Another issue is hair salons. It's my understanding that the state prevented local, local governments from impacting hair salon. So it's possible right now for someone to open a hair salon in their home in Port St. Lucie and, you know, have, you know, people driving in and out of their, of their homes and their driveways as a home-based business. And so, you know, those types of things, because unfortunately Tallahassee is, is, is lobbied by special interests and those special interests are creating statewide laws that impact us locally. And so I would be lobbying the state legislature heavily to, to prevent home rule infractions.
Okay, thank you. And same question to Anthony Bana, how important is Florida home rule?
It's, it's absolutely critical. Local issues are best decided by the local leaders who know their community best. And you can't have people who are in Tallahassee or in Washington DC making decisions for our community. They don't know our community. They don't live in our community. And our community should decide our own fate. And so I am absolutely a big proponent of home rule. Actually, my faith, it's a, it's a principle called subsidiarity that matters ought to be handled by the smallest, most competent local authority. And it's something I feel very strongly about. And, you know, I, I think that there is a role for state government. There is a role for federal government, especially in terms of, of, you know, a unique business interest where, where companies want, you know, don't want to have to adjust from something from every single municipality. But for the most part, if it can be handled at the local level, it should be made by the local people who know their community best. And so I will absolutely be a strong advocate of home rule.
Okay, same question to Taveras Williams, how important is Florida home rule?
Thank you, Carol. Whether it's our homes where our families live, our places of business, schools, hospitals, I personally find it absurd to have lawmakers make decisions that impact these areas who aren't a part of our community. They don't have any skin in the game. Home rule is absolutely necessary to ensure that any decision made to govern our city is one that we residents support and express the desire for. The safety of our children, families, educators, civil servants, professionals, you name it, can't be solely in the hands of an office several counties away. And to that end, I believe we need a unified front between our local and state elected officials. And that unified front needs to be on full display, especially when our capital proposes policies that don't align with the needs and the desires of our city. This is how elective representation was designed to work, that our leaders champion the issues and actions that affect their constituents. That is why I believe in and support home rule.
Okay, same question to Jared Michael Greenberg, how important is Florida home rule?
Very important because guess what? Problem solved locally tend to be solved. So I've been listening to a book called Liberty Defined by Ron Paul. And I encourage everyone to listen to that book, download it from Amazon. If you haven't downloaded an Amazon and listened to it, it's a great listen. And it talks about when the federal overreach has with communities that have no business being regulated. So I am all component of and all supporting of home rule because problem solved locally, stay solved and stay fixed because it's the constituents that solves the problems. And they elect the leaders that they want to represent them and keep this republic working the way it should be. And that's all I got to say on that.
Okay, next question starts with Anthony Bana. Recently, it's become clear the nation is in a labor shortage and Port St. Lucie will not be sheltered from that shortage. Local businesses are struggling to find skilled workers, which negatively impacts their ability to stay in business. What do you propose the city can do to help businesses and workers through this time? Mr. Bana?
Absolutely. Well, education is a very important issue. It's both an immediate and a, a, a long-term issue. And so we should continue working with community partners like Indian River State College. We should support vocational training programs to ensure that we have a well-skilled workforce. And, you know, we should, we should make, educate and make aware of other community programs and nonprofits and other, other, other services that help people train and get the skills that they need in order, in order to work. We should work with, you know, we've, we've talked a lot about relationships in this, in this forum. We should, we should work with the school board and support them closely in their efforts as, as well. I stress that we are one community. We are, we are one Port St. Lucie. So partners like the chamber, like the, like the EDC are all an integral part of, of this. And so the city doesn't do a lot with education directly. We can work together with our community partners and support vocational training programs.
Hey, thank you. Same question to Taveras Williams. What can the city do to help businesses and workers through a labor shortage?
Thank you, Carol. My, my work as a contract manager, being the main funding source for several service agencies in our four county area, that brings me face to face with the labor shortages that everyone is currently facing on a daily basis. At the end of the day, we can slash budgets, we can assess fines, we can take further punitive measures and make threats to find other vendors. But none of those substitute for the services our residents expect to be provided on a consistent basis. What we're witnessing now is just the tip of the iceberg as it relates to labor challenges for the foreseeable future. But I believe Port St. Lucie is uniquely positioned to face these challenges if we aren't afraid of new ideas. We need to focus on our nexus points that connect our academic and vocational learning to job placement. And we have programs such as the County's Ready to Work Program and the newly instituted Cities Open for Business Project, where we need to expand upon these two programs. With our 98% graduation rate in Port St. Lucie, we need to also better market our job-ready workforce to companies that align with the training our workforce currently has. And regarding our small businesses, we can further support them by utilizing existing platforms such as our city's website and our social media presence. We could absolutely highlight the services offered, vacancies, locations, upcoming events. And this would not cost us a thing, but it would be a tremendous support to our local small businesses. Thank you.
Okay, same question to Jared Michael Greenberg. What can the city do to help businesses and workers through a labor shortage?
All right. Well, you gotta have a source. So if you're not making, if you don't have a good birth rate, you don't have people to work. So to encourage that, I would encourage daycare and put the daycare in nursing homes. That helps the nursing homes because it helps juvenileate the elderly in that. They've done studies. It's amazing results. And high schools, get the shops classes back. We need trades. We need electricians, we need welders, we need plumbers, we need electrician. We have to get the shop classes back in the schools so the high schoolers can learn a trade. Could play in video games? You, you, you don't make money playing video games. Sorry. You have to learn a trade. And so if we can encourage our high schoolers to get educated with training from IRSC, when they graduate high school, they can get license to start their own business and have a small business initiative that, hey, this is how you run a successful business. This is how you balance your checkbook. And that encourages businesses to hire locally. And well, if you have a labor shortages, you have to have affordable housing. People have, when I have to have a family, they have to have a place to stay. When homes are $400, $600,000 for a four-bedroom house, that's unattainable when you're starting off in a young family. So it's a complex problem to be solved, but you have to have a source to solve the problem. And so to do that, you have to have pro-family choices in the community to encourage families to want to come and move to the area to be local residents. Remember, vote for Jared Greenberg. What can Jared do for you? That's all.
Travis Walker, same question, helping businesses and workers through a labor shortage?
Yes, and as the, as an owner of a small business, I uniquely know about this issue because, you know, dealing with labor shortages is a real issue and not, not just in my industry, the legal industry, but in other industries as well. I believe I'm the only member of, on this panel of candidates who actually, you know, runs payroll bi-weekly, who actually, you know, I have 15 employees, I've created jobs. And so I understand the importance of having a strong labor market, making sure that we're, we're creating good jobs and quality jobs and maintaining those, those jobs. That being said, you know, I, as I understand it, I also know that, you know, there's incentives and grants and ways to find ways to, to improve the labor force here. I'm supported by members of the St. Lucie County School Board because we're, we're trying to develop a relationship where we're actually fostering vocational programs. Because you can have a, a high unemployment rate because you don't, you have plenty of people, but if you don't have a good skilled people, you're not going to be able to fill the important jobs. I'm a member of the board, a former board member of the Chamber of Commerce. I'm a member of the Economic Development Council. And I was a member of Port St. Lucie's, City of Port St. Lucie's Economic Growth Team. So I'm uniquely familiar with the importance of job creation and making sure that we, we're doing everything that we possibly can. So, you know, incentivizing and creating vocational programs, having strong relationships with IRSC as well as the school board, I think is, is essential in order to, to make sure that we're growing the labor force in a strong and effective way.
Okay, thank you. Our next question will start with Taveras Williams. Students living within two miles of their school are not eligible for free bus transportation. Safe routes to schools is a Florida Department of Transportation program that helps municipalities provide safe routes across busy intersections. To your knowledge, what plans exist to address this issue and what additional efforts should be made? Taveras Williams?
Thank you, Carol. The two-mile radius for busing and safe routes has been an ongoing concern for parents across our city. At the end of the day, we need to support our school board and we need to support our children. If there are opportunities to expand on those bus routes, we absolutely need to pursue them. I myself, as a father of two children, I am very intimate with the busing routes as well as the child pickup and drop-off line. And if we can survive that, we can survive anything. We have to look at our community and what works for it. And the reality is a lot of people would be able to benefit if we were able to have our children bus who live within a two-mile radius that would free us up to pursue employment, that would free us up to do a lot of other things that busy parents absolutely need to do to make sure their families are fully functioning. So yes, I, I am in support of whatever we can do to support our children, to support our school boards by expanding safe bus routes. Thank you.
Okay, same question to Jared Michael Greenberg, supporting safe routes for children to get to school?
Need parents to take their kids to school on their bicycles, get some exercise, make America fit. So that is a very complex question because if you have bus routes that only go two miles, then you have a need for a lot more buses. So I don't have a solution for that problem at the moment. I have not studied it. But I am currently looking at schools because I have two young children. And so we are deciding that for ourselves and we have not come up with a choice that we're going to decide which, which way yet. So, but I would encourage people to walk their kids to school, take their bicycle to school. It's great exercise. It gets your blood flowing and there's huge health benefits. And two miles is not overly excessive. So especially when you ride a bike. That's all I've got to say.
Okay, Travis Walker, same question, safe routes across busy intersections for schoolchildren?
Thank you, Carol. And as the father of two young children, it's, it hurts me to know that every day, Port St. Lucie children are put into harm's way by having to walk the roads without sidewalks and without safety implementations, without the intersections that are needed to really effectively do it. It's a, it, it really is unnerving sometimes to see the situations of children walking down the street, getting, you know, early in the morning when it's dark out, trying to get to the bus and the precarious situations that are occurring there. And as a father of two children, it, it, it just, it shakes me sometimes to, to know what's going on. I think that the key word here is collaboration, the relationship with the, the, the school board, the relationship with the TPO and, and looking for innovative ways to, to protect our children is, 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 is going to be very essential in the, in the long term. And, you know, you know, sometimes it's not what we know, it's what, knowing that we don't know everything and be, walking into things and trying to find ways across the country where maybe other cities and other municipalities and counties have, have effectively addressed similar situations. And we need to not just think that we have all the, the answers to all the questions and look outside the boundaries of what we are to be outside the box. You know, and as I, you know, and I, I, I really do think it's an issue. Because as I walk and I walk and go door to door through this great city of ours, I'm often, you know, having to jump in, you know, off the side of the road into the grass in order to not be, you know, you know, hit by a car. And so, you know, I do think that like we do need to find a way to protect our children, make that a, a high focus of importance and do what we can to implement innovative ideas in that department.
Okay, Anthony Bana, same question, safe routes for schoolchildren across busy intersections?
Thank you for the question. It's a, it's actually, it's a very important question. Access to a public education is very important for each and every one of our students. It's what lifted me up and it's what put me in a position to even be here, having this discussion with everyone today. And, you know, fundamentally, it's also important because of And, um, you know, fundamentally, it's also important because of the safety of our children. Um, and, and, and so, um, this is an issue where we need to continue working together with, um, with our school board. Um, and, um, supporting them in their plans, we need to invest in our roads and sidewalks, which the city is doing. Um, and, uh, but, but this is mostly an issue where we need to collaborate with the school board and give them the support that they, that they need. Um, and work together, and I'm a hundred percent committed to doing that. You know, be, uh, being on the council is not just, just going to a few meetings, it's act, so it's actively working together with all of our partners in the community, other agencies, um, and our nonprofits and community leaders. And so I'm committed to doing that.
Hey, thank you. Our next question will start with Jared Michael Greenberg. Port St. Lucie's population has a median age of forty-two years, but citizens span equally across all ages. So what types of activities, opportunities, facilities, and services should the city offer to ensure it is engaging and entertaining for all ages?
Well, um, if you go to my website, you can check out all my ideas for activities that we can do, um, that we have in our backyard. We have a ton of resources that we currently are maximizing, um, to the full potential. Uh, we have a huge, uh, waterfront areas that we can use recreational activities, water skiing, wakeboarding, um, boating. And, uh, then, uh, you can bike ride the C twenty-three and C twenty-four canals, that's forty-four miles of, uh, biking if you go that far. Um, it's open to the public. Uh, we need more parks to have more basketball and more tennis courts, uh, to be able to play the different sports. Um, I applaud the, uh, city and the rec league that they've started up, um, because people need exercise, people have to get out and do things, it's healthy, uh, and, uh, to get the, uh, sun. Um, and so I just like to have all the new areas that are being developed and the old east side to have areas to focus on, um, activities, you know? Make sure the public know of all, all the dance halls, so you can go dancing with, with your spouse and significant other on, uh, Friday night. Um, and get the awareness of activities, so to speak, have an activities calendar of all the upcoming events, uh, where the, you can go and do stuff. Um, and, uh, that's about it.
Okay, thank you. Same question to, uh, Travis Walker. What types of activities and opportunities should the city, uh, think about for all ages?
Uh, thank you, Carol. So, and I think there's an opportunity across the city and across the spectrum, uh, for, for opportunities and activities for, uh, people of all ages. This is a city of all ages, that is what the model of City of Port St. Lucie is, and, and we certainly, uh, I think we can, we have that goal and we can make it even better. The western side of the city, we're, you know, we're taught, we have an amphitheater in the plans to, to entertain, uh, people on the western side of the city. If you look at, uh, the eastern side of the city, obviously we have the city center, which I think has, uh, enormous potential now that the SEC is, is let go of, of control of that. And what we need to do is create a triangulated approach of, uh, a private, the private side, um, the public citizens and the government to have a conversation and discussion about how to make that more of a destination and to really help that to revitalize, um, the eastern side of the city. Um, the, the other thing we need to talk, I mean, we can talk about really is, is, and the government doesn't necessarily always have to be involved in it. We need to be supporting private enterprises. The great thing about free market capitalism is that if there's a demand for something, eventually it's gonna be filled by somebody who, uh, is, is there to, to fill that, that demand. Um, so we need to support, um, you know, uh, entities that come into the area that, you know, want to, to develop, um, businesses, um, to fill some of those entertainment and activity needs. Um, I think there's a great opportunity. If you look at some of the developments out west, um, you know, the active adult communities, um, they're almost like all encompassing. You can just stay in that community for all intents and purposes and be entertained with pickleball or, uh, you know, shows and, and just about anything under the sun. And so I think, you know, while the government does have, the city has a, a big place in, in making sure those activities are provided. I think we also have to, you know, support the private sector. Um, and as a small business owner, I know that it, the, and once there's a demand seen by someone who's had an entrepreneurial spirit, um, you know, that would be filled. And finally, you know, I, the, at the last city council meeting, the city council floated, uh, some bonds to help, uh, the Torino area and, uh, a park that needs to be going on, uh, go out there. And so I'm, I'm, I was very happy to see that, very supportive of that unanimous decision that the city council had, uh, to provide some parks out there. So we just need to be, um, thinking of, always thinking about that, those parks and making sure that, you know, everybody in the City of Port St. Lucie is within a ten-minute walk of a park. Thank you.
Okay, same question to Anthony Bana, activities and opportunities for all ages.
Well, that's, uh, that's what I love about the city of Port St. Lucie. We are truly the city for all ages. We're one of the, consistently ranked one of the best places to retire and also one of the best places for young people to buy a home. And so we not only, um, have that slogan, it is a reality for our community, um, as, as, as evidenced by those, by those rankings. And, uh, what we need to continue doing, uh, several others have talked about parks, um, and, and bringing more diverse types of parks, um, as well. Um, I know, uh, the vice mayor recently went to, I think, Chicago and, and toured, uh, some parks over there. And so getting ideas from other communities as well. Um, what I really love about the city council is that they are, um, very focused on citizen input and what do the citizens want? Um, and so, uh, we should, we should have a very citizen-driven process as to what the city's going to be doing. Um, the, the port, um, what's going, what's going on at the port and, and, and that master plan as well is gonna be very, uh, very good for, very good for the city. Um, we've talked a lot about city center. Um, and so, yes, the city can do a lot of things and, and also the, the, the private sector. It's very important that we engage the, the private sector, that we make this, um, that we make it as, eh, as, as easy as possible to do business in Port St. Lucie, um, so that businesses do wanna come here. And, and the private sector is going to fill those voids, um, and, um, and, and provide, uh, provide other fun activities, um, for our citizens of all ages to do.
Okay, same question for Taverus Williams, uh, activities and opportunities for all ages.
Well, thank you for the question, Carol. And, and I have to be honest, if you hadn't asked that question, I don't believe any of my fellow, uh, candidates would have addressed this. But this is actually one of the platform points that we have with Work for Williams. I don't believe we're living up to our city's model currently, a city for all ages, but we can get there. Bringing in additional entertainment venues for residents to enjoy would drastically improve the quality life of all Port St. Lucie. Life is hard. We all know that the grind is very real for our families. Having ways in which to relax, laugh, and relieve stress are all needed in order for us to maintain healthy balance in our lives. Port St. Lucie's demographics have shifted, and that is clear by looking at the way our city overall has been planned. We had to reconcile with our small-town feel and the reality is that we are now a large city. And in order for us to become an amenity-filled, vibrant city, we have to embrace that. We embrace that by showcasing our young, modern minds, by supporting them, allowing their unique energy to uplift this city that is rapidly growing and evolving. We continue speaking about Village Green and Southern Grove areas only regarding job growth. Job growth is absolutely vital, but at the same time, what are we talking about for extended nightlife? We don't just have population extremities. We have a lot of workforce living here too, between the ages of twenty and fifty. Close your eyes and think about the last fun weekend you've had where you've left the city. Think about the things that you did. Open them and see if we have those activities and those venues here in Port St. Lucie. And we don't, but we absolutely have the opportunity to do so. From speaking to, uh, city manager Blackburn, Southern Grove is, yes, designated, designated as our newest industrial center for job growth, but there are recreational lots carved out. We need to be plentiful of that and we need to aggressively pursue venues that families of all ages want to enjoy. In addition to our park expansion, in addition to our community events, we need further nightlife here in Port St. Lucie. Thank you.
Okay, our next question now starts with Travis Walker. Florida's environment and ecosystem are some of its most appealing attributes for both visitors and residents. Maintaining the health of the environment is important to continuing that appeal. So what are your top three environmental priorities for the city and how will you implement, Mr. Walker?
Thank you, Carol. And the most important thing, I, uh, there are three, for the three important, uh, things that I think are important for the city. One is the, the conversion from sewer to septic and getting people off of septic. Uh, two, uh, doing more water cleaning projects such as the McCarty Ranch, uh, project. And three, um, eh, making the city of Port St. Lucie an even more tree-friendly city. Um, with regards to the, the wa, the wa, uh, water and sewer, um, the affluent that is in our river and the North Fork, uh, and St. Lucie rivers is disgusting. It is appalling what is occurring in our rivers and our water. And it's basically those, those estuaries, those rivers are under attack and it's, it's time for us to fight back. Um, I believe the city needs to look at other alternatives or best practices from other cities to encourage the twelve thousand homeowners who haven't yet connected to the city sewer system, uh, to hook up. Um, you know, the affluent that goes into the ground is not good for anyone. And we have, and we've really seen the impacts that it has, uh, on the health. Um, I'm interested in pursuing a plan in which these homes are, are with septic are given every opportunity to convert with assistance. I think developing those relationships with federal and state levels to find, uh, grants and incentives for people to go, uh, and get special funding maybe, uh, to get that conversion over, um, is, is huge. The city still offers, uh, um, interest-free, uh, payment plans for people who want to, to convert. Uh, from, so really, uh, at the forefront of my thought process is getting those, getting those people off of the septic and cleaning up our rivers and water quality is huge. Um, I, I applaud the McCarty Ranch Water P- Project, I think by taking water out of the canal, uh, filtering it, cleaning it, putting it back in the canal is, is a huge testament as to our city's, um, i- importance and priority of making sure our water qualities and, and improving the water quality, uh, for our canals, um, and our water systems. And finally, you know, Tree City USA, you know, uh, in, improving, uh, our tree quality, uh, which improves, um, the quality of life, um, the, the, the fresh air, uh, and making sure that we have a, the environmental, uh, balance that we need is, is important. And, and again, I applaud the city council's efforts in making us a Tree City USA, and, and we look forward to, um, to, to develop, to developing that even further.
Okay, thank you, Anthony Bana. Next, uh, what are your top three environmental priorities for the city? How would you implement?
Sure. Um, so the first one, um, is, uh, septic to sewer conversion. I think that, um, incentivizing conversion from septic to sewer is, is very important. Uh, the city should continue what it's going, uh, what, what it's been doing with, uh, with, with assistance and leveraging, leveraging grants. Um, but, um, water quality has been, um, is absolutely the most fundamental, uh, issue, um, environmentally facing our area. And so at the local level, we need to do everything that we can, um, and, and septic to sewer is a big part of that. Um, also, um, our stormwater projects are, are, are incredible and updating the, the, uh, stormwater master plan and ensuring that we have, um, that infrastructure, um, and, and that, that utility, um, is, is very important. I think, um, promoting, um, the work of, of Keep Port St. Lucie Beautiful, talking, actively talking about things like picking up litter. Um, putting on, putting on a vest and going out and picking up litter yourself is very important. I know, I know that I've done that, uh, I have a great friend that runs, uh, People Serious About Litter Port St. Lucie, I'll give that a little plug. Um, and, um, and so I think, uh, from, from that point, and the reason I bring that up is if you care about something, you're going to be a part of the, of the solution. And, um, and so, so I'm absolutely committed to doing that. And then just supporting, supporting our, our parks program. I think, um, the, the more green that we see, the better it is for our community. Thank you.
Okay, and, uh, the question to, uh, Taverus Williams, your top three environmental priorities.
Thank you, Carol. Well, well, being a coastal-adjacent community, we witness firsthand the, the effects of, um, changes to our environment and our climate daily, whether it's through beach erosion, um, tidal patterns, um, affecting our, our habitats and recreational opportunities. We have challenges because our weather is changing. And to combat these changes, we need to embrace minds and new ideas of the younger generation who have clearly shown that they will not allow this to continue. Those are the minds that are gonna lead us into greener business ideas, which we need to help foster. And again, this all goes back to our nexus point with linking the available academic education and vocational training being offered to actual job placement and the support of entrepreneurship. Through internships, grants, and important businesses that offer greener products, Port St. Lucie has the, the opportunity to, to shift our energy and water consumption habits. We can support technologies to become more efficient and greener, like solar, electric cars, charging stations. Um, absolutely, we're going to focus on our sewer connections because we need to remove ourselves from, um, the septic tank model. And we're gonna increase our recycling efforts as well as our water refill stations throughout the city. All of those greener efforts all come with the ability to create jobs. Yes, we have Tesla and electric car charging stations throughout the city. Do we have vocational programs to teach our young citizens how to build electric cars, how to maintain them? To me, that would go hand in hand, and that's the perfect nexus point for how we're advertising ourselves as a city to what we can actually offer in terms of a sustainable job opportunity. And I believe the Citizen Academy also has been a big plus in making people aware of all of the efforts we're making on the city level to become greener. Thank you.
Okay, same question to Jared Michael Greenberg, your top three environmental priorities.
Yes, hi. So, um, being an engineer and working in the utility industry for quite a few years, I think a huge, uh, growth opportunity is, I'm hoping you guys can s- see the, uh, the screen, is to get a renewable power generator slash recycling center slash manufacturing facility built to handle our trash. So there's some facts about trash burning. Of, uh, two thousand tons, two thousand pounds of trash can be reduced to three hundred to six hundred pounds and reduce waste by eighty-seven percent. And that's using a commodity that currently is just stored in the ground and is thought that it is no longer needed. But it's, it's, it's a valuable resource that we can use to minimize our environmental impact and create a little bit of electricity for a couple of homes. And you, we can build it using the, uh, model that Flotero did, because they have a hundred and eighty thousand people back in two thousand eighteen, so give them two hundred thousand now for a COVID census. Um, and their facility's been operating for years, burning trash. And education, educate our young on why polluting is not important. And, and really do testing to see where the polluters are. Is it industry that's dumping into the w- rivers? Is it septic that's dumping into the rivers? Find where the heavy hitters are and go after those first. And then encourage picking up trash. I think I'm the only member that's running, that's actually adopted a street and is actively picking up trash in his neighborhood and is actively making a difference on a monthly basis, keeping his neighborhood clean. So I think we just keep on using and encouraging and educating to minimize environmental impacts, um, to keep our city green and plant more trees, especially when they flower, because beautiful trees make you so much nicer. And that's all I gotta say.
Okay, we, uh, have several questions coming from our Facebook Live audience. And let's go to those, uh, now. From, uh, first one here, we will be starting with Anthony Bana. How do you plan to protect the wildlife whose habitats are being destroyed when land is cleared for development?
I think, I think the, the important thing is to ensure that the law is being followed. Um, and that, that, uh, there's, there's more, there's more enforcement, you know, land, um, that's zoned for residential has, has a right to be cleared. And so there's, there's private property rights, um, that, um, the, the city council cannot interfere with. But, but to ensure that, um, we are, uh, that, that, that developers are complying with the law, um, that, um, that wildlife is being protected is, is, is important. It's not really, um, you know, something that the city necessarily does, but we can alert other government, um, and other, other enforcement, um, of, of particular needs. And, uh, one of the things that you can always do, and I have people call me all the time, uh, who are concerned about specific situations. And so as your councilman, I'm gonna be the kind of person, you can call me on my cell phone, um, seven, seven, two, two, three, seven, zero, nine, eight, four, and I'm gonna work directly on the issue and do the follow-up, um, to make sure that, um, that, that wildlife is protected or any other issue.
Okay, Taverus Williams, same, uh, question. How do you protect wildlife habitat when you're clearing land for development?
Thank you, Carol. It, it is a, a sad reality that as humans expand their reach and as we continue to develop, nature's freedom is infringed upon. And in St. Lucie County, we definitely have species that have been burdened with that reality, um, whether it's the gulf herfordus, whether it's our sandhill crane population, back here where I live in town. Back here where I live in Town Park, we used to have a thriving bobcat situation. Now, I know most people don't want to see bobcats, but that's a part of nature as well. And I see bobcats and cubs dead on the ends of sidewalks from being struck by cars. So many species are being impacted by our growth. I think we need to continue fostering our relationships in our assessments with fish and wildlife to ensure that when endangered species or species on the brink of becoming endangered, we identify, we relocate, and we ensure that developers are following environmental laws so that we can protect our environment as much as we can. As we continue taking space away from animals, it is our responsibility to ensure that we are preserving some habitats for them. And I believe that we have the ability to do that with our collaborative nature here in Port St. Lucie. And as city councilman, I will definitely ensure that our developers follow all the laws on books regarding the protection of our native wildlife. Thank you.
Okay, Jared Michael Greenberg, same question. How do you protect wildlife habitat when you're clearing land for developers?
Oh, you set aside land that can't be cleared and use designated as forests that cannot be developed. That's the only way you're going to stop developers for seeking the almighty dollar. And so if I could share my screen, I'd show you my 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 ideas. But you have to have a chunk of land set aside to, hey, this is going to be a natural preserve. This is going to be a forest. We're going to cultivate this for wildlife to be able to survive and live here in the area. Now, you can't tame nature. Nature goes where nature goes, you know? But you can have, you can promote habitat for nature to be in there. And encourage more trees, you know, trees. And I know it's sad that the only thing we can do in a developed city is to plant more trees for birds to have their nest in and squirrels to make a home in. But the only way we're going to solve a wildlife issue is by creating preserves in the western part of the city that's currently not developed and to make those a natural resource.
Same question Travis Walker, protecting wildlife habitat while clearing for development?
Yes, Carol, it's a very important question to make sure that we're on top of. And I think there's three big things I want to talk about. One is a home rule, two is preserving green spaces, and three is working with collaboratively with state and federal officials. So home rules is very important because if the state legislature comes by and says you cannot restrict developers from doing X or removing gopher tortoises or, you know, snail kites or whatever else. You know, if they impose restrictions statewide, that prevents us from a state from a local level to to have stricter environmental regulations on behalf of our citizens and our environment. So first off, we want to talk about home rule, make sure that we're taking care of that and that we're able to pass the laws and ordinances that we need to to preserve our environment. Two, we talk about green spaces. You know, if you have 200 quarter acre lots, that's 50 acres. But if they're spread throughout the city, that's not preserving green spaces. What we need to do is focusing on taking those maybe those same proportional amount of acres and and preserve those that green space continuously. I live close to woodland trails here in District Three, and it's a beautiful spot that that actually has a trail in it, and they've they've done a good job in the city to preserve that that woodland environment. And I would encourage more of those types of things and having contiguous green spaces in order to preserve the environment because species like bobcats and 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 those types of of animals, you know, can't survive on just a couple of acres of woods by themselves. They have to have a larger habitat in order to to be able to effectively do it. And the bobcats and those other animals are important parts of our ecosystem, just as they as as everything else is. And finally, you know, we have to work with state and federal legislators, making sure that we are effectively lobbying them with regards to what we're seeing on in our local environment. And you know, it's important because we have to stay in our own lane. You know, we we don't have the necessarily have the authority to enforce federal and state regulations as city council members. However, we do have those relationships with state and federal agencies to make sure that they are effectively enforcing those and also developing those so that we are protecting our environment.
Okay, thank you. Let's take another question from our Facebook Live audience. Let's see. Why do you feel you are qualified? This will be starting with Tavarez Williams. Why do you feel you're qualified to ensure our city continues moving forward in a manner that celebrates, promotes, and encourages the diversity of all citizens?
Again, I think I am uniquely positioned with my my field of candidates to answer this question. From my my experience in child welfare, that that spans close to 20 years. One of the things that is important to establishing relationships in the families that you encounter is by respecting cultural diversity. And I say that because we have dynamic individuals in this city who make their lives work in educating, protecting, and uplifting our community. And that has been the most fulfilling aspect of this campaign for me is that I get to meet more of those wonderfully passionate neighbors of mine throughout the city, learning about their passions, why they fight, and what their fights are. When we bring passion, awareness, and planning together, we yield great outcomes for our city. I would further engray myself within the city by further cultivating these relationships with our city leaders and service organizations to make sure our policies don't leave parts of our community behind and that we have the full picture of our community needs. Everyone wants to be heard. Everyone wants to be respected. When we get multiple perspectives at the table to discuss the issues that are important to them, then we can paint the whole picture. That's how we become stronger as a community by making sure there's no one left behind. Thank you.
Okay, same question to Jared Michael Greenberg. Why do you feel you are qualified to encourage diversity?
Well, people like me. They always have. I host neighborhood block parties and everybody comes out. We have a good time and we all talk about problems and concerns and encourage each other. And I've always been a great listener and always liked to do activities. I'm a soccer coach and a New Hope Fellowship, running a basketball program. I'm on the church board there. I'm an Eagle Scout. I'm also an engineer. You name it, traveled all over the world, met a ton of people. And I think having a diverse background growing up helps me with being a great listener to look at all of the problems that someone's having and try to come up with solutions that will work for all parties. But you don't know until you try. So vote for Jared Greenberg and we'll see what we can do. Thank you.
Okay, same question to Travis Walker. Why do you feel you're qualified to encourage diversity in the city?
Carol, and one of the important things that I've integrated into my law office at my firm is diversity. If you look at my staff, it's it's a diverse group of age, race, backgrounds, cultures. Because I believe when you bring people from different backgrounds and different cultures and different places, they come with different ideas. They they we integrate, we understand each other better, and we we move forward in a way that that diversifies the thought process within the firm itself. And so we're able to come up with solutions that are innovative and different because we have, we don't have just a one-way type of of thinking. We're able to mix in those different ideas. I've been to Haiti twice on mission trips. It's part of my faith. And, you know, I have a special place in my heart for the Haitian and Caribbean communities that are here in Port St. Lucie. And they're near and dear to my heart. And so, you know, I I believe that we need to be reaching out to those organizations and having liaisons or and liaisons with our special special needs communities, which I think are sometimes underserved. You know, people who are on the autism spectrum or Asperger's or Down syndrome, you know, we need to make sure that we're having discussions with those communities as well because as we we have workforce housing issues, those issues are compounded by special needs, needs that are out there as well. So I would be reaching out to them, communicating with them. You know, I think there's an important opportunities for liaisons with those communities to make sure that we're 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 being inclusive of conversations with those those peoples.
Okay, same question to Anthony Bana. Why do you feel qualified to encourage diversity in the city?
Well, I think it's my commitment to making sure that we are one Port St. Lucie. You can't be one Port St. Lucie if you don't have if you leave people behind. And so everyone and and diversity is, you know, intellectual diversity. It's it's diversity of severity of jobs, it's diversity of background, it's diversity of 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 education. It's it's bringing different people of different ideas together with a common goal. And that's something that I've always done in my life. I don't I don't hang around with people that just agree with me on everything. I try, I seek out different perspectives. I seek out different communities. I seek out different cultures. I love to travel. I had an opportunity, you know, to to study at Georgetown University. Kids like me weren't supposed to study at Georgetown University. When I went there, I met students from all over the world. And just learning from them, it was it was such a great, it was such a great classroom. You know, learning from entirely different cultures, studying abroad. I've been incredibly blessed. I've lived. I I I've lived through challenges. I've I've lived through blessings. And I think my appreciation for this community and my appreciation for making sure that every person in this community, whether that's a kid or whether it's whether it's a senior has has the same opportunities I had. It's why I take an interest in scholarship programs. It's why I take an interest in service programs. Everyone has a seat at the table with me. And you have my commitment. I answer the phone. I meet with anyone because I believe everyone needs a seat at the table, and I will make sure that we have one Port St. Lucie.
Okay, we have more questions from our Facebook Live audience. And let's see here. What are your, we'll be starting with Jared Michael Greenberg. What are your thoughts regarding septic versus sewer hookups for new and existing homes?
Well, my home is on septic, and I like the septic. It works great. I don't have any septic issues. And septic system, there's a lot of emotions, it seems, with this septic debate. Far as my understanding, when a septic system is installed, it's permitted to the health department, it's inspected, and it's professionally installed. Now, if there is a septic system that was not installed, permitted, and has an issue, that's a whole different story. So I think if a homeowner wanted to build a home and put in a septic field, he should be able to put in a septic field. He should not be forced to convert to city sewer. Now, I understand that that is the current zoning requirement for any new homes to be built inside the city. Port St. Lucie has to be automatically converted or hooked up to the city sewer system. But I am proponent to a healthy ecosystem, and septic systems have worked for thousands of yields if they're put in properly. So that's where I stand on that.
Travis Walker, same question. Your views on septic versus sewer systems for new homes?
Yeah, for new homes. Yeah, the one of the main reasons why the city of Port San Luis is as great as it is is because the our city forefathers had this forethought to to know that if you do you want to be a city or not, and the utility system is what really makes our cities so great. There's other local communities in our area who are dealing with more serious septic system issues because we aren't because they don't have the same utilities that we do. We have a great utility system run by a great department, great city staff. And, you know, I I think that, you know, when it comes to to new homes, when it comes to conveyances, we need to start to be you know, we're looking, we already have interest-free loans in place right now. And they start looking at grants and incentives and other leverage items in order to get people off of septic and on the sewer. And, you know, eventually, we maybe we have to look at other strategies with regards to conveyances and and new homes, you know, and and explore those opportunities and see what's out there because getting people off of septic is essential. You know, when we do water testing and we find, you know, prescription drugs in our water or or Tylenol or things like that, there's there's reasons that that's occurring unfortunately within our water system. And let's be real, it's not because somebody just dropped a few Tylenol tablets in in our river. And, you know, in order for them to make sure that that affluent isn't getting into our our systems. And that's why I led off with regards to our environmental issues about the the conversion from from septic on to utilities because it is such an important issue for our community to make sure that that environmental issue, which I mean, it's it's a huge environmental issue, I mean, that the ecosystem there is is such an important part of our 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 local, our local economy as well to make sure that we're preserving that.
Okay, same question to Anthony Bana. Your views on septic versus sewer in both new and existing homes?
Right. Well, my my view on septic to sewer, and I stated this earlier, is that we should encourage and help as many people as possible to convert from septic to sewer. I think it's the environmentally responsible thing to do. It's important for 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 our water. And, you know, we should do everything we can can to encourage that. I don't believe, you know, you know, mandate or anything like that is is the right way to go. You know, it could be very, very expensive for our homeowners, but if it fails, they need to they need to switch from septic to sewer. And we should prioritize, you know, the the city should look to data from the microbial studies to determine the prioritization of of conversion in their in their education and encouragement efforts as well.
Same question to Tavarez Williams. Your views on septic versus sewer?
For me, Carol, and Mr. Greenberg brought up a motion earlier. For me, I look at the bottom line. What is the impact of the decision to go septic versus sewer? What is the impact if a system fails? What is the impact if something isn't installed correctly? How does that affect our neighbor? And so when we we look at our new construction and understanding, we still have homes within our current grid that are on septic versus sewer. I think we have to always and everything be planful and do things in a responsible way. I agree ultimately that we should convert our septic tanks to the sewer system, but we need to do so in a responsible way. Doing something in a rushed state to to incur fees and unnecessary anger and wear and tear, that ultimately isn't going to make us a fruitful or and happy thriving city. So we need to be planful. We need to take a look at the assessments and studies done to see what the cost would be. We need to spread those costs out responsibly over a certain period of time. Because I believe there is a tremendous environmental impact at play there. And unfortunately, things do happen. Look at Surfside in Miami. The older a structure is, the greater an opportunity is for a failure. And so being as how we are coastal adjacent, we need to be mindful in protecting our waterways. Thank you.
Okay, we have, I believe, one more question from those watching and listening this evening. As a resident of the area east of US1, and we'll be starting with Travis Walker. From as a resident of the area east of US1, we have many, many infrastructure problems, including flooding and aging structures. What will you do to fix those problems, Travis Walker?
Yeah, and and definitely have seen that occur over the years. I remember those pictures and and living through those times when, you know, school buses were had to be used to get people out of the flooded areas of the eastern side of US1. And I think my heart goes out to those people and, you know, in that Sam's Club area around what was going on out there and certainly you know, feel for it and was and completely aware of the transitions that occurred out there. And like I said, I'm uniquely familiar with the Village Green area, having I've worked out there and and know and and have a number of good friends out there in that district. You know, certainly looking at long-term plans, the stormwater improvement plans that the city of Port San Luis has, I believe it's a $130 million project that they're looking at do to help improve stormwater. Those low-lying areas there in on the eastern side of the city need as much help as they can possibly get because of the of that low-lying and a topography. So we need to be looking at ways that the city can improve the stormwater plan and enhancing that, looking at grants and incentives. You know, help trying to get the state legislature to to fund some projects for stormwater and those flooding issues and lobbying the state, you know, to help bring dollars down here to to, you know, have projects in place so that we can take care of that. And then and then constantly being mindful of the 100-year storms and the impact that that could happen. You know, when I was with the, I was at an EDC meeting and they talked about the effect of a storm on you know, the the affordable, you know, the workforce housing, you know, if a bad storm comes through, you know, the eastern side of the city, I think is going to be obviously uniquely affected because of its geography in relation to the coastline. But then also because of of some of the aged architecture that was mentioned by that that question. So we need to find ways to be proactive and making sure that we're looking at that eastern side of the city to be sure that it's protected.
Okay, Anthony Bana, same question. What would you do to fix the infrastructure problems east of US1?
Right. Well, I think there are there are several several points here. So number one, this is part of part of ensuring that we're one Port St. Lucie. For me, said that many, many times tonight. And so on things like spending, you know, spending our And so on things like spending, you know, spending our refer, uh, sales referendum, infrastructure referendum dollars, we need to ensure that we spread, that we spread those throughout the city. We need to, we need to invest in our infrastructure. We need to work with, with state government and, 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 and try to get whatever grants that we can and whatever support that we can. And I have the, I have the relationships to do that. And so I, that, that will be a big focus of mine. But I think those, those kind of three approaches are leverage relationships and grants and invest and prioritize every area of the city is the approach I would take. Thank you.
Okay, same question to Vares Williams. How would you fix the infrastructure problems east of US-1?
Our heart goes out to all of the residents of Port St. Lucie who are in low-lying areas where they're susceptible to flooding and poor water drainage. And unfortunately, it's not just on the east side. You know, as my, my fellow candidate forum attendees have mentioned, we have a drainage issue in Port St. Lucie. Whether I'm on the east side of US-1, whether I take the crosstown, the crosstown during the right storm, trying to get to par from PSL Boulevard and, and Gatlin on a wet day, you will be flooded out. That's one of the issues. We've been discussing stormwater plans and the current funding available at the city council for years now. And this is one of the projects that hasn't gotten the, the urgency as other projects have. And that's one of the things that I would champion. I do feel we have some projects that are currently ongoing that could be put on hold to prioritize our drainage issue because we do flood at a tremendous rate at various parts in the city. And as we continue to grow, as we continue to develop, our arterial streets and major roadways are going to be more congested. So more people will be affected. So whenever we have an undertaking where we're looking at growth and planning, we have to be mindful that anything that we do today has to yield the same intended result 20 years from now. And stormwater and drainage are one of those, are those issues that we have to be cognizant of regardless of the plans that we make. Whatever we do today, it has to be fruitful 20 years from now. Thank you.
Okay, same question to Jared Michael Greenberg. How would you fix infrastructure problems east of US-1?
Science, use science. So we have to know what the problems are first. And so if topographical surveys have not been done to know where the watershed should be flowing, then that needs to be done. And we have to look at the whole situation. So all the developments that have gone in, do they work well together? Does the exits of one development discharge onto another development? So it's, it's affecting the other one. So we have to look at the entire picture to see what is the root cause of the issue. Because rain, it's going to keep on coming. We're going to keep on having hurricanes because that's the way Florida is. So we have to work smarter now harder. And if that is the only issue of stormwater, that is a problem that can be solved. It is not unreasonable to manage drainage through stormwater. Yes, you're going to have roads tore up to put the cover pipes in to be able to flood, to discharge it to the areas that can discharge it into the rivers and into the ocean. So you have to just use science and figure out what is the root cause and then just go through the checklist and get it done. Yes, it will cost money. And so everybody that lives in Port St. Lucie, that's why we pay taxes. That's part of the infrastructure fee that we've been paying since you bought a house. And it's just a problem to be solved. And that's what we do as engineers. We solve problems. So I'm a great problem solver. So vote for me, Jared Greenberg. I'll get it done.
We have come to the end of our questions, so we'll now move to the closing statements. You'll have two minutes each. And we will start with Anthony Bana.
Well, thank you again for the opportunity to address important issues in our community tonight. I am Anthony Bana. I'm your candidate for Port St. Lucie City Council District 3. I am the only candidate with experience in elected office. I did serve this community as a county commissioner. I was endorsed in my reelection by the, by the TC Palm newspaper, who thought I did a great job in the position. I took a balanced approach to the job. I met with every resident that, that wanted to meet with me. It's the same thing I do with you. I give out my cell phone number, 772-237-0984. Because I believe that beyond the issues, this is a public service opportunity. And it's an opportunity to live out that vocation. I have great support in the community. Vice Mayor Shannon Martin is supporting me as well as Councilman Pickett and Councilwoman Carvalho, Assistant Chief of Police Del Toro, as well as our local police union have backed my campaign. So public safety, we didn't talk a lot about it tonight, but public safety is very important to me. And state reps Tribalsi and Overdorff are also strong supporters of my campaign. I have a flexible schedule. I have the time to serve this community. And I will, I'll be absolutely dedicated to this position. And I'll never let up until we continue reducing our property tax rate. That's another issue that didn't, that didn't come up tonight, but the city's been taking incremental steps and I will continue working to do that. Keep us the safest large city, help keep attracting companies here and protect our great natural resources. Anthony Bana, your candidate for Port St. Lucie City Council District 3. Visit me at anthonybana.com. And thank you for being engaged in this process.
Thank you. Next closing statement, Taveras Williams.
Well, first, many thanks to the League of Women Voters for inviting me to participate in tonight's forum. Thank you, Sabrina. Thank you, Carol, for moderating. It is very exciting to be in a political race in which no candidate has been duly elected to hold office before. Port St. Lucie family, we have the tremendous opportunity right now to truly embrace our motto of being a city for all ages. My question to everyone watching and listening tonight is how do we want our tomorrow to look? Do we want to continue to travel outside of the city's women's defined economic opportunity? Do we want to continue to lack the amenities of a large city such as nightlife, increased dining and recreational opportunities? Do we want to bury our heads in the sand and continue growing without securing our infrastructure and environmental improvements for the next 20 years? All innovation throughout the course of history has begun with a single spark, just one idea that is passionately pursued and supported. We have innovators in this great city, but we have to build out that support network to allow our new generation of innovators the opportunity to flourish. My degree in public administration and working experience managing state and interagency contracts and agreements, as well as crafting and analyzing budgets and financial reports, has uniquely prepared me for this position. I've viewed city council meetings for the past two plus years and I'm well-versed on our challenges as well as our opportunities. As city councilman, I will continue my work of speaking with the community, city and service organization leaders to ensure our challenges and our ideas are given the proper voice. Through our effort and continued dedication to serve one another, to strengthen our community, I know that we can shape a promising tomorrow for Port St. Lucie. If we all work with Williams, that collective voice and the strength of our community will overcome any challenges that our city will face. Please visit my website at tavaruswilliamsforcitycouncil.com to learn more about my platform and how you can further support my campaign. God bless you all and have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. Closing statement, Jared Michael Greenberg.
All right, I'm Jared Michael Greenberg. I want to lower taxes by increasing opportunities to generate revenue for the city so that the 5.9 miller's tax rate can be reduced. I think we should be looking at the picture of our current problems, how to increase economic prosperity with what we currently have in our backyard. One way to do this is using the C-23 and 24 canals to make them ocean access to promote economic growth for 25 miles from the ocean. I think we should build a trash burning power plant slash recycling center that can burn trash from Indian River County, Okeechobee County, St. Lucie County, and the city of Port, Port St. Lucie. This will allow sustained growth and generate income revenue for the city and solve an ever-growing problem, our trash, the Florida mountains. And I'm pro-family and pro-life. We need to work to get more parks so family members, fathers, mothers, grandparents, and uncles can use and participate with their children and grandchildren. Family needs to be able to go play with their kids and have areas to do this. Parks, ponds, fishing piers, kayak ramps, biking trails, hiking trails, forests, we can make it happen. We need jobs that residents are proud to go to work and teach their children how to work hard and be a good provider. Remember, vote for Jared Greenberg. What can Jared do for you? Please call me to discuss your concerns at 352-514-6426. Or go to my website at sites.google.com. Vote for Jared Greenberg. What can Jared do for you? And thank you and God bless and have a great evening. And thank you for the League of Women Voters for putting this on.
Okay, thank you. Travis Walker, your closing statement.
Thank you to the League of Women Voters. Thank you, Carol. Thank you, everyone, for, for putting this together. It's, uh, it's an opportunity to present what I think are some great ideas from some great candidates here. And our, and thank you for the other candidates for being on this forum. I am Travis Walker. I'm running for city council here in Port St. Lucie District 3. I'm a business owner, a lawyer, a homeowner, a husband and a father, and a concerned citizen. In addition to being an attorney, I'm an Eagle Scout. So I've taken two oaths to serve and protect. And so I'm wired to serve and that's why I'm here running for this city council seat. I've sat on the city's Port St. Lucie Planning and Zoning Board and the city's Economic Growth Team. I've attended and watched the city council meetings many times and I've researched and educated my issues and the current issues that the city are facing or will face in the near future. I've been involved in the city since my first campaign in 2000. And between my credentials, my experience in government, my nonprofit dedication, I believe I'm the most qualified person for the job. I've served on a number of nonprofit boards, including the Boys and Girls Club of St. Lucie County, the Education Foundation of St. Lucie County, the United Way of St. Lucie County, the City of Port St. Lucie's Youth Court, the Port St. Lucie Bar Association, the Port St. Lucie Historical Society, the St. Lucie County Economic Development Council, the 18th Congressional District Service Academy Panel, the 19th Judicial Circuit Teen Court, the Port St. Lucie Area Council Chamber of Commerce, Governmental Affairs Committee, the St. Lucie County Young Floridian Scholarship, the Traveling Youth, and the Hibiscus Children's Center, Rotary International, and several others. So the service is, is part of what I'm there and I have, I've built a, a law firm. I've created jobs. I have a staff that I'm proud of and that we can do. Since my family moved here to the city of Port St. Lucie in 1996, we, I've been proud to call Port St. Lucie my own as a city of all ages. So please visit our website, travis, votetraviswalker.com. You can email me at traviswalker@votetraviswalker.com. Call me on my cell, 772-873-7377. Reach out to me. Let me know how you think our city is doing, how we can make it better and work towards a great future for all of us. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you. We need to thank our candidates for participating tonight. Anthony Bana, Jared Michael Greenberg, Travis Walker, and Taveras Williams. Also need to mention, there are two more candidates on the ballot who were unable to be with us, Fritz Basan Alexandra and Gregory Blake. We need to thank the League of Women Voters for developing the questions for this evening as well as our listeners and more people watching on Facebook Live who contributed questions. And certainly want to thank you for informing yourselves about the issues in Port St. Lucie, about Port St. Lucie City Council District 3, and also the mayor's race. They will all guide the future of Port St. Lucie. Sabrina?
Thank you, Carol. So on behalf of the League of Women Voters, thank you to our candidates for making the time to inform our, our public about your desire to lead the beautiful city of Port St. Lucie. Thank you, Carol, for your time as well, working through these past two nights, making sure that our candidates are certainly being treated fair and balanced as it relates to the questions and issues that are most important to the citizens of Port St. Lucie. So before we conclude, Fort Pierce will also have a special election coming up in the very near future. And the League of Women Voters will be a part of that effort as well. You all be well, stay safe, and good night.